All right, Dr. Fletcher, I don't know if you're still on or on yet, but we are ready to go whenever you are. Okay, Dr. Fletcher's having some trouble getting in, I'm gonna send him the link again.
Okay. Dr. Brummett, there's some people who are emailing me or texting me saying they can't get in. Like, from the outside?
Interesting, because I've, anyone that's wanted to come in, I've invited in, let me see. There are 28 people here, so there's gotta be some folks.
I had a similar issue, something with Google, I was logging in, it was going black and logging out, it was going black, so I'm not sure.
I'm gonna send her the link again.
Yeah, same with me, mine went black when it first.
Interesting. If you give me any names, I'd be happy to send emails out.
Dana Havens.
Oh, I think I have her email.
Do you have hers?
Well, maybe not. She'll have to give it to me, I'm not sure.
All right, I'll get it.
Dr. Fletcher's here.
Yes, he emailed me and I re-invited him. So it looks like everyone's in, except them of our guests.
Okay, so all our board members are here?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm gonna call this meeting of the Newington Board of Education to order, the date is Wednesday, January 26, and the time is 7:10 PM. As you are able, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Completed, I would like to ask Ms. Craig to call the roll.
Michael Branda.
Here.
Danielle Drozd.
Here.
Dr. Bruce Fletcher.
Here.
Beth Manki-Hut Wagner.
Here.
Richard Loverrier.
Here.
Amy Parati.
Here.
Sam Sharma.
Here.
Jessica Weaver.
Here.
Anastasia Yap.
Here.
Everyone is present.
Okay, very good. At this time, we're gonna move on to Agenda Item Number B, Presentations of Awards and Proclamations, Dr. Brummett.
Well, perhaps some of our board members have already guessed, but our everyday hero for today is Mark Balling, music teacher at Ruth Chafee Elementary School, that's might be why you see a lot of Ruth Chafee people on tonight. Mr. Balling was nominated by Erin Gilbert, and here is what she said. "Mr. Balling goes above and beyond, all year, every year, to construct and craft a music experience that is relevant, engaging, nurturing, and educational for all of our learners, and goes above and beyond to support assemblies with his piano, accompaniments, and facilitate music-based activities and projects for students and staff alike. He coordinated video projects to support us all when we were home in the spring of 2020 to keep us all connected." With a, he did a virtual 12 Days of Google Meet, which was hilarious. Was a music video live from the music room, and it streamed in lieu of our traditional sing-alongs last year. This year, he brought his flexibility and creativity to a whole new level in collaboration with the wonderful Emily Provost, Mark planned not one, not two, not even three, but four sing-along events this year for our students. Like all of us, he pivoted and renegotiated his plan multiple times overnight to accommodate the emotional climate and safety requirements of the moment this week. For classes on Screen and Stay, and therefore unable to sing in classrooms, he created an entirely separate project called the Chafee Winter Music Festival, full of music videos that the kids were less likely to miss singing along to. He held a Google Meet for us all to be together and showcased each class, one at a time, coming down to my classroom with his computer in person for my students, as we had so many students on temporary remote and so few in person, it would have been hard to do both. Mark is a master at making sure that all students feel seen and represented, and make sure his learning and his activities are accessible to every one of them. Chafee is so lucky to have him, so I present to the Board of Education our everyday hero, Mr. Mark Balling, and he will get this nifty certificate tomorrow, I'm gonna come over to Chafee tomorrow and present this to him. So congratulations, Mr. Balling, and I will turn it back over to Dr. Fletcher for any comments.
Okay, is Mr. Balling with us?
Yes, he is.
Yes, I am, Dr. Fletcher.
So good to see you and hear from you again.
Yes, good to see you too.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much. Thanks to Erin Gilbert and Mrs. Lawrence, and I know Emily's on this meet too, and Danielle, good to, you know, good to hear your voice again, it's been, you know, it's been a roller coaster the last year and a half, two years, but thank you so much for acknowledging, you know, all that's been going on with the music part of our school. And actually, it's not just the part, I, you know, I do make it a mission to integrate it in the whole school, and I'm so glad that, you know, you're noticing that, and thank you for acknowledging, you know, what's been happening. I mean, we just did a concert on Monday night too, and that got postponed two times. First one was, we had three fourth grades on Screen and Stay, and yeah, Erin's, you know, Erin's class was wonderful, and so, yep, okay, we gotta cancel that, went to last Thursday, and then we had snow. And so, we just did it on Monday night, but we were able to do it one class at a time, so we could meet the safety standards for the audience, and it went really, really well, parents, I got some nice emails from parents, and you know, thank you so much for recognizing us.
All right. Congratulations to you. Anyone from the Ruth Chafee staff here would like to speak? We'll go to the board members in just a moment. I don't see anybody. Okay, Ms. Yap.
I was gonna say, I don't wanna beat, I don't wanna take Beth's thunder, I know she's about to unmute her mic, but.
But I didn't wanna take yours, Erin, because.
You go, my words were read. But we love you, Mark, and we're so lucky to have you, and we're just very appreciative, and you know, when you came down that day to my class with your computer, as you were walking out, one of my students said, "He came down all the way here just for us," and that just speaks volumes about how, you know, appreciated you, you know, make our students feel, and have seen and loved and cared for, so. I know Beth has some other things that she wanted to say, so I won't steal her words, but.
Well, thank you, Erin, once again, for just thinking about this, you know, for Mark, because he does go above and beyond. You know, I think back to last year where he did an instrumental concert outside, and had to finagle with the weather then, but he made it work, our parents were so excited. It was a beautiful day, as if Mark had planned the weather himself. It was just such a beautiful day, and our parents were just, just as gracious, you know, or grateful this, that time around as they were on Monday. And I just wanna add one little piece. When we talk about how Mark makes sure that every student is seen, we had a young lady who was late for her class's concert, you know, and she came in probably about five, maybe 10 minutes late. She missed the first song, and she had a little role in the song where she played a musical instrument. So right at the very end, you know, Mark's kinda whispered up to her and said, you know, "Do you wanna do your part?" And all the other kids said, "Yes," and she said, "Yes," so he turned to the audience and said, "We had a student who missed it, she has a role, we wanna give her an opportunity to play her song," and I could see the look on her face of how appreciative she was to Mr. Balling for thinking about her, and I think, you know, for any of you who know me, it doesn't take much to kind of make me teary-eyed, so Erin and I, I think, are both at the back of the, you know, gymnasium, like, oh my God, that's just the best thing ever, so, you know, Mark, we love you, and, you know, I don't know where Chafee would be without you, so, we appreciate you greatly.
Thanks so much, Bev, thanks so much, Erin, I appreciate it.
Well, it's a well-deserved recognition, that's for sure. I feel like I'm back at work again. All right, Mr. Sharma.
Hi, Mark, just wanna reach out to you and thank you for, like, going above and beyond. I mean, it's so inspiring, thanks for what you're doing, keep it up.
Uh, thank you so much, Mr. Sharma.
Yeah, thanks a lot, Mark.
Ms. Weaver.
Oh, I say this every time, but Love Fest is so nice, there's so much love, not only between our teachers and our students, but to be able to highlight that between our staff is just wonderful. I think it really shows, not only that we highlight everyday heroes, but we're able to highlight the entire staff that recognizes each other. I think that's one of the greatest parts of Newington, is that's why we work as a well-oiled machine, just because there's so much respect, and then on top of that, so much love for each other's work, and it shows in not only our students' successes, but in our teachers' successes in recognizing each other, so congratulations, Mr. Balling, I'm so mad I never had, it wasn't on the Ruth Chafee side to have you in music class, so there's definitely some envy there, but I'm so grateful for our students today and tomorrow to be able to enjoy your teaching, so, and I still wanna hear more about 12 Days of Google Meet here, like, that sounds really fun, I would love to just hear some of that. So, just congratulations again, and thank you to our nominators as well. Florence, for your kind words, I think that just shows our community how great our staff is.
Thank you. Mr. Branda.
Thank you, Dr. Fletcher. We all know that this pandemic did so many awful things for people personally, and the education system, and it just hasn't been the same for two years, but it also allowed people like you, Mark, to just do exceptional things for our students, and just hearing how you adapted, and you overcame so many challenges to just ensure that our students can still fulfill their passion, or even learn a new passion for music is really inspiring, and I think our district, quite honestly, have been at two concerts in the last two weeks at Wallace, and our district just has such an incredible music department from elementary all the way up, and and I think that it's clear that you play such an important role in that, and I heard before the meeting, Ms. Drozd had mentioned her son, and how much you meant to him, and I think that her son is probably just one of hundreds, if not thousands, of other kids that you've inspired to love music, and I think that's just a real credit to how much you care about every single student, so I just wanted to thank you and congratulate you.
Thank you, and Ms. Yap.
Hello, I have no other pleasure to meet you, but I wanted to say, congratulations, Mr. Balling. I personally sang in the choir soprano my whole life. A lot of people don't know that about me, but I sing soprano, and I'm excited, and I'm really happy for you, and I wanted to congratulate you, I'm glad we have a phenomenal, you know, music teacher, the fact that you, you know, from what I've heard, you go above and beyond for the students, I just wanna let you know you are appreciated, and congratulations. So, thank you.
Very much, thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Drozd.
Sheena.
I think you're muted.
All right, so, I am a Chafee parent, who, they didn't teach me how to unmute my computer back then. So I love the fact that as I came on this evening, I saw three Chafee teachers that I knew, and I'm sure I would love you too, Ms. Gilbert, my kids weren't there. And the fact that it could have been any of the three of you who were getting this award, because I remember how phenomenal all of you were when my kids were back there, but you all, and Mark, you light a fire, like, I can't tell you how much my kid loves to sing, he stuck with it, you gave him a singing award, I thought you were crazy, I was like, really? And, and he just, he flew with it, and you built his confidence, and he loves it, and all of you do such a great job, every passion that was lit in elementary school at that school, all three of my kids still have that, whatever passion you lit, they still have, so, thank you, Mark, thank you, all of you. And I'm gonna stop talking now, I'm gonna mute myself.
All right, I don't see any more board members. Dr. Brummett, do you wanna say anything else?
No, but I'm gonna ask Mr. Balling to send me that Google video again, I think it's worth a reprisal, because it was so wonderful, and, you know, I was just so impressed when I read Ms. Gilbert's nomination, that it just jumped off the page as someone that was so highly regarded at the school, and my interactions with you have certainly reinforced that, so congratulations, this is an honor well deserved, and I'm thrilled that you've been able to hear all this wonderful feedback this evening.
Thank you so much, Dr. Brummett, I mean, my gosh, thank you all for such wonderful feedback, I really appreciate it.
All right, thank you, and congratulations again, Mr. Balling.
All right.
All right, we are now going to be moving on to Agenda Item C. This is our time for public participation on any matter related to board responsibilities. We do limit civil participation to three minutes, and we ask that you state your name and the street that you live on if you wish to participate at this time. Looks like we have a couple of them, we'll start with Melissa Tulosano.
Hi, I'm Melissa Tulosano, and I live on 8th Street here in Newington. I feel that the social, emotional well-being of our children are being greatly affected by the continued protocols for COVID-19 in place, and specifically mask-wearing. Not even just social, emotional, but academic as well, especially in younger age groups, I have a first grader, and in terms of speech, letter recognition, and facial visible expressions are so important at such a young age. Governor Lamont's executive orders are ending soon, and he's asking legislators to sign into law or extend his 11 executive orders, and I just have a great concern with children having to be masked for a long, extended period of time. The UK recently rescinded mask vaccine passports mandates for COVID-19 protocols post-Omicron, and this was one of the places greatly affected early on in the pandemic. So why are they now adopting such change, yet we're talking about mask-wearing long-term in schools? The guidance from the SDE, the DPH, and other state agencies, it's not law, it's guidance. So, once these orders have expired, should they not be extended or signed into legislation? What is our plan as a district? I would just love, I would just love to know that, or to be able to see that. Any such protocols driven by, they should be driven by facts, peer-reviewed science, not state, federal funding, or fear. The fears which driving, the fear in driving these protocols creates horrible environment for learning. And we've come to the point in the past two years that the virus isn't going away, the contraction transmissions are occurring regardless. So why isn't our focus transitioning to more promotion of health rather than fear? Why isn't it part of the social, emotional learning and well-being of students? I'm not sure if it is, I haven't heard it from my first grader, but taking, talking about diet, sleep, movement, etc., I would just love to see also the science behind allowing a vaccinated student to forego quarantining when exposed in the community, and an unvaccinated student can't, when there hasn't been any literature that shows the contraction or transmission changes with vaccination status, and if that's the case, they have just rescinded vaccine mandates for teachers and state employees, and as well as the contact tracing by vaccination status, which we were visible, we were able to see via email each week by Dr. Brummett. I just find it interesting that these changes have occurred, yet they're still differentiating vaccinated students and unvaccinated students, and I would just love to see that literature beyond just the SDE, the DPH guidance. And as well as finding it hard to believe that these vaccine mandates were rescinded because of just cost, when we just spent a bunch of money on at-home tests, which, again, the at-home tests aren't necessarily stopping transmission either, because a vaccinated individual may actually contract this virus, have minimal symptoms such as a headache or a runny nose, which are common with Omicron, and still be in the school setting or in the community, and think because of their vaccination status that there's not contagious, and the at-home tests will only pick up a high viral load, they don't pick up a low viral load, so until.
15 seconds left.
Yep, until they actually test positive, they may actually still be contagious. So, I mean, regardless, I would just like to see what our district's policy is beyond the executive orders in place by Governor Lamont. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. We have, next up, Sarah Yizer.
Hi, I'm Sarah Yizer, and I'm from East Robbins Avenue. After listening to some of the comments made at the last meeting, I got the feeling that I'm seen as bringing a bad vibe to these meetings, so I want to start off by saying that I'm very proud of what the students in Newington are doing, and I don't wanna take away from their success stories. I enjoy hearing the updates about what's happening throughout the district, but I also come here as a voice for my family and for other families that are hesitant putting themselves out in front of a microphone or a computer to talk about real issues. Hearing the truth isn't always beautiful, and it hurts when you learn you've been lied to. So whenever I come here, I promise to come with the truth. I come to each meeting speaking about mandates and how they're against the law, and parents should have a choice whether to send their kids to school in a mask or not. England lifted its mask mandate last Thursday. Masks in schools are no longer required. There are other states in the United States without mandates that are doing just fine, if not debatably better, and why are we, Newington, Connecticut, so different? 25 states are suing the president because of these mandates. Three prominent doctors, two infectious disease physicians, and one director of emergency medicine infectious disease management, who were strongly supportive of masking policies in the fall of 2020, have now changed their minds. In an article yesterday, it says in certain parts, and I quote, "In certain parts of the country where CDC mask guidelines were rigorously adhered to, children have not seen the faces of their teachers or classmates since early 2020. This affects learning and development, particularly for our youngest learners. Maintaining aggressive mitigation policies, including stringent mask rules, also sends children, families, and the staff the message that schools are not safe, and this is simply not true. Give them their childhood back," end quote. We heard last meeting from a student how the music is played in the hallways during transition times. When asked why this is occurring, and let me be clear, I'm all about the music, the answer was because the students are so stressed, and they're stressed for numerous reasons, and our children's mental health is at stake. Last Board of Ed meeting, I spoke to Esther Fund, coming with strings attached. Parents want to know, I want to know, the breakdown of the $3 million in COVID funds, where's the money going, and why do you need it? Connecticut reports from the 2019-2020 school year state that Newington received $17,825 per pupil from the state, local, and other funds. Newington has 3,933 students enrolled. That is $70,105,725. Not to mention the extra $6,000 per Hartford student that one board member pointed out last meeting, thank you. You have the ability to say no to these mandates, they're not laws, and not receive the $3 million. How can anyone look at us in the face and say that it isn't about money? I strongly suggest that you listen to Senator Ron Johnson's five-hour roundtable discussion. There's no versions, but the full thing won't disappoint. Thank you.
Thank you. And, Ms. Tulosano, I see your hand is still up, so if you wouldn't mind just taking it down, so it clears my queue, and then next up is Jim Parati.
Hi, Jim Parati, 175 Hillcrest Avenue. I just wanna voice my concerns about the replays for the Board of Ed meeting. They are not available at all for the recent Board of Ed meetings on NCTV. And in an age of transparency, I would greatly appreciate if they could be uploaded, or if there is another way where the Board of Ed meetings could be uploaded to a YouTube channel, similar to the Newington Town Hall meetings or Town Council meetings, when possible. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. And as always, we will attempt to get back to you as quickly as possible with answers to any questions that you have raised. And I do not see anyone else from the public. So at this time, I am going to move on to our Agenda Item D, which is our Consent Agenda, and this will be the approval of the minutes from December 15, 2021, January 12, 2022, and January 19, 2022. So if I can get a motion from either the secretary or someone to approve these minutes.
Motion. I'm gonna see if I can say this right, a motion to approve the minutes from December 15, 2021. Do I do them all together, Dr. Fletcher?
Yes, go ahead.
A motion to approve the minutes from January 12, 2022, and then a motion to approve the minutes from January 19, 2022.
Motion is made, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded, can I have the clerk call the roll, please?
Michael Branda.
Yes.
Danielle Drozd.
Yes.
Mr., I'm sorry, Dr. Bruce Fletcher.
Yes.
Beth Manki-Hut Wagner.
Yes.
Richard Loverrier.
Yes.
Amy Parati.
Yes.
Sam Sharma.
Yes.
Jessica Weaver.
Yes.
Anastasia Yap.
Yes.
The motion passed 9 to 0.
Very good, thank you very much, everybody. We wanna move on to Item E, which is our Superintendent of Schools' report, and her update with a school promotional video, Dr. Brummett.
Yes, I just had to let someone in. So, earlier this fall, we partnered with a company called CGI Communication, and actually, this is a company that also worked with the town of Newington and other local businesses to develop promotional videos, and I was fortunate enough to work with not only the company, but from our internal team, Jacob Trowbridge, who helps us with all things video, he is the man behind all of our live streaming for both sporting events, and most recently, a lot of these winter concerts that I've been sharing with you. And he also does a lot of work with our broadcasting class. He also joined myself and student Andrew Schilling, who I don't know is here tonight, he's probably doing something else, because he's one of those busy students, he's a senior. So they worked with me and the production company to develop this promotional video that spotlights our schools at all three levels, high school, middle school, and elementary schools. And they were integral on the day of filming, they followed me around, and the producer around, and the cameraman around, to capture highlights of our schools, and Jacob, are you on the line still?
I am.
Awesome. I don't know if you wanna add anything else to how this production worked, we went everywhere, from.
It started off with a lot of Zoom calls. Basically, we coordinated with the video producer, his name was Colin, just basically coming up with the layout of the script. This determined like how the video format should go from beginning of the clip all the way to the end, just focusing on like certain aspects of the schools, STEM programs, athletics, performing arts. My role, like, when I wasn't on the calls, I worked with the building principals, I had to compile some usable archive footage that we had, any photos, because they did request that, in addition to the content that they would be coming out to shoot as well. We also had to coordinate like on-air talent, there are portions in the videos you'll see where they did interview some students, and then we basically just came up with like location ideas as well, so, that's like the gist of it.
And I believe you helped with some of the drone footage?
Yes, we also did some drone footage too, and then they also came out and did drone capture as well, so.
Beautiful, so, without further ado, I'd like to share these brief videos with the board, I think you'll recognize some familiar faces, so I just click on this.
Yeah.
And just go for it, so, we're gonna start off with the high school. "They're all like, 'At Newington High School, we provide endless opportunities for students to learn, grow, and achieve at their full potential.'"
Originally founded in 1934, today, Newington High School is an NEASC accredited school. Under the leadership of Superintendent Dr. Maureen Brummett, we equip students with the skills, knowledge, and experiences they need to become lifelong learners.
With a focus on educational equity and a strong foundation in core academic subjects, we ensure that every. we ensure that every student is well-prepared for the future.
Career and technical education programs are available to explore medical sciences, aerospace and engineering, journalism, communications, culinary arts, and more. With a wide variety of athletic programs, an exceptional marching band, nationally recognized music programs, and a remarkable theater program, our students consistently excel and make our school proud.
Some clubs and programs I'm involved in are Deckard Student Council, and I enjoyed that. They give me the opportunity to get involved in the school community and work with a variety of people from the district to plan community service projects and events for our school.
Whether in the classroom, on the field, or on the stage, we help students thrive and succeed at every level at Newington High School.
So that is the high school video. And now I want to show you the middle school video. And this is both middle schools are featured. Oh, internet don't fail me now.
Students at Martin Kellogg Middle School and John Wallace Middle School earn a well-rounded education. Martin Kellogg's Academy of Biomedical Sciences and John Wallace's Academy of Aerospace and Engineering offer unique learning opportunities for those enrolled. From both schools' advanced television studios to drama clubs, music programs, and numerous other extracurriculars, students can explore new interests and share school spirit.
We are dedicated to helping every student achieve and find success.
Okay. And now, last but not least, our elementary video. You may see familiar, a couple familiar faces in here too.
A strong foundation in early childhood education begins in the Newington Public Schools.
Across four exceptional elementary schools, we offer rigorous and relevant learning experiences for pre-K through fourth grade students. Led by dedicated teachers and staff, children have the support and opportunities to grow and thrive academically, socially, and emotionally, from exploring core subjects to athletics, music programs, and more.
At every age and grade level, we believe in setting our students on the path to success.
So I hope the board enjoyed those little snippets. They are going to be spotlighted on a town of Newington site, which I'll get more information on as these videos get rolled out. But we feel that we'll be able to use these videos for purposes of if a parent inquires about the school district or as we communicate with Open Choice. These are all opportunities for us to showcase our district. I wouldn't be surprised if some realtors get a hold of these videos and try to show parent, prospective homeowners what kind of school system we have. So I do feel it's a real strong, you know, real strong way to promote our district. It's something that the town is also doing through various, they've got a video on the town side. And I, I believe many of the businesses in town may have also participated. So that, that concludes my report about the promotional videos. And I'm just, I'm real proud of them. They're gonna be on our website now that the board has seen them. And we'll kind of push them out to families to make sure that everyone knows this is a resource for our school district. So I don't know if there are any questions.
Yes, Ms. Hut Wagner.
Thank you. I was just gonna say that those are outstanding. And, and was I, if my husband and I were a young family, we are a young family. If we didn't live in Newington and we were moving here to Newington and saw those videos, I think that would absolutely be something a realtor would show. I think it really captures the essence of what, what Newington schools are. And being a product of Newington schools myself, I feel like I take extra pride in watching those because it really shows like these are the schools that nourish kids and put them on the path to such amazing things in their future. So really, really wonderful work. Thank you to everybody that worked on that. I, I just commend you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Yap.
So I wanted to say I love the videos. I thought they were amazing. Thank you so much for all the hard work. Thank you. Like Beth said, you know, Mr. Trowbridge, nice to see you. Thank you for everyone who's worked on those videos. I thought they were amazing. I love seeing all the little ones, whether they're high school or middle school or elementary, and I think you guys did an awesome job. I mean, those were, I loved them.
Thank you very much. I don't see any further questions. So that concludes that item. So at this time, we're gonna move on to the update on Anna Reynolds renovation project. I believe Mr. Smith, you'll be taking this.
Yep. Good evening. Thank you.
You can drive the PowerPoint, Mr. Smith, while you're setting up. We are also joined this evening by our architectural firm, Jim Anjali. We're Marty Lisca, our project managers on the line, and our chairman of the building committee, Mr. Stephen Woods. They're here tonight to field any questions after Mr. Smith is done with his presentation. But we thought it'd be very important for the board to have a good handle on the current status of the renovation project. Take it away, Mr. Smith.
Thank you. Thank you all board members for having me and other, other guests this evening to kind of share. When I was talking with Dr. Brummett last month about our Anna Reynolds' presentation, I had talked to her about giving you kind of an update on the Anna Reynolds project, but also taking you back to the beginning of it and all the work that's gone into it. Because I know that there were a new number of new members to the Board of Education. And so this is really aimed to kind of catch you up on all the work that has gone into the project. And a lot of it is behind the scenes that you may or may not be aware of. And then where we are currently with, with the project. So before I get into the actual project, you've probably seen some of the posters at previous meterings for the schools. And so we have kind of established our goals for the year as a, as academic. And right now, we're actually in the process of looking at our winter goals and our winter benchmarks just came back. And so teachers are really diving very closely into all of that data to identify where our celebrations are, where there's room for us to continue to grow and dig deeper with some plans to finish out the school year. And there have been a lot of celebrations for us, and we're very carefully looking and planning from there. I mean, in terms of some very specific strategies that are targeted by Anna Reynolds is back in the spring of 2019, we really started looking at our collaborative teaching techniques. I spoke about that earlier at a board meeting and how working together with a special education teacher is reading interventionist, all the different support services in the classroom to best support all students. We've also focused in 2019, and we're continuing kind of coming out of the pandemic, really focusing on visible goals. So students can have a purpose for when they are reading, for when they are working. And so those are two very distinct strategies that are very, very specific to Reynolds. We also changed our logo going into this year with a new kind of tagline saying, "Together we" at Anna, "Together we learn, lead, and succeed." So that's kind of our new logo and our, our new spirit wear this year. So that's on our, on our posters. It's also got the construction hat on there right now to tie it to our building renovation project. So in terms of the renovation project, there are a number of major players that you'll hear from over the course of the project and that are involved in it. I'll be speaking about tonight. The Anna Reynolds Building Committee is that group that is ultimately making the decisions on the project where there are changes, what plans get approved. I work and Dr. Brummett and other members work together with the architects to develop some of the plans. But then they go before the Anna Reynolds Building Committee to be the ones making those, making those decisions. And they meet on these, the, to every other Thursday or so. So if you have an opportunity, I know that a couple of board members attend those meetings to be able to attend them in here. But they're ones really making the decisions regarding the project. The Board of Education, the Town Council, I know you have some actions tonight to look at, and the Town Council moving forward are also, you know, the major decision makers. Pre-ref referendum, you would have heard that Colliers International was part of the project and did a lot of work with us in developing the ed specs that I'll go through and leading up to the referendum. Post-ref referendum, the Anna Reynolds Building Committee had hired in the Town Council as the architect was Castle Booze and Associates, and Jen Mongiaglia and Paul Dominion, who both may be on with us. I know Jen is tonight. The, oh, the operations project manager, OPM on the project is Construction Solutions Group with Marty Lisca, and Marty's on with us tonight. And the CM on the project, construction manager, is Newfield Construction. That's Tom Demoro and Brian Grant. And so they've been the ones doing a lot of the work right now to help us to have the project continue to move forward. For members, I know there's been some questions on the timeline. So what I had put on here is this is the initial schedule that was developed by Colliers. And so that initial schedule involved the grant application, pre-ref referendum, that's all these parts right here, and then going to referendum. So all the work leading up to that where the star was, the November referendum, back in the election, all these marks were hit. And then after that, we went into the process of hiring the architect and the OPM, hiring the construction manager. And now we're currently right here continuing in the design phase of the project. So all aspects of this are continuing as scheduled with the bidding coming up in the next couple of months to lead to construction aiming to, you know, beginning as soon as school gets out. So these snow days keep pushing things back a little bit each, each day that we have a snow day. But goal is as soon as school gets out, we're ready to kind of turn the school over to the construction manager and allow the project to be, you know, begin with a lot of their work. Then there is the phases of construction. So the initial December 2023 was what pre, you know, referendum, Colliers was what put forward as to when the presentation would be kind of wrapping up. Since the other companies have come on board and the work, we're really looking at building construction ending at May 2024, and then the site work ending at the end of that summer 2024. So that really comes from as the companies were, came on board with what their phasing plans that get proved by the Anna Reynolds Building Committee, kind of map it out. So, so early questions are, "Why renovate Reynolds?" If you've seen probably many of these pictures, you know about the significant leaks that were occurring in our building for many of those years. I know many of the, were on the board before we had, you had tours of the building to be able to see some of those concerns. But those of you that are new to the board may not have, have seen them. We do not have any real active leaks right now. We do have the occasional leak that does pop up and some brown spots on the ceilings, but our custodians get those changed out. We're able to address them. But it's not because of the kind of work that the emotion process that was done a year or two ago to give us about five more years of roof life. We have not had any kind of significant leaks in classrooms. Whereas a couple of years ago, last year, we had buckets lining hallways. So we've been able to kind of really hold off to allow this project now to get us that new, new roof and be in a good place. You'll see there's a picture here of the gymnasium ceiling. That's what the gymnasium looks like. I know that circulated years ago on social media as well as for concerns. But other reasons for why renovating Reynolds and this need for the entire building is that handicap accessibility. If you know the building, there is no elevator. So if you are in the lower wing, you have to be, go around the entire perimeter or the entire perimeter of the building in order to get to the upper, the upper area because of the stairs that are there. Or you have to be kind of be cut through our courtyard area. The nurses' office is not ADA compliant. I'm kind of broken, taking people in there for being able to maneuver in a wheelchair. The bathroom, even with COVID right now, and the nurse's office is actually completely closed off because there's not a sink in the bathroom. And so it's not, you know, it's not really sanitary for people to be using without a sink in there. So that's been kind of closed off. So our bathrooms are outdated. If you've seen them, there's actually a door that is locked and closed that leads from the bathrooms, bathrooms in the first, second grade hallway out to the outside from years ago. The main lobby in terms of security and having a much more secure entrance in a vestibule area versus when you come into the building, you have access to the entire building, you're not forced into, you know, the office area. So that's some of the things right now with our project, why renovating Reynolds? And then one thing I always say is a way to describe the inefficient mechanical systems and the heating. It's like carry around my sweatshirt because you go into one room, you gotta put your sweatshirt on. You go into the next hallway or room, you gotta take your sweatshirt off because it's too hot. I was down in a third grade classroom and it's like, feels like it's 90 degrees in there. But then, you know, you go in another room and it's, it's freezing. So there is that really inefficient heating system. So all of these concerns are really being tackled by the renovation project. So back in the spring of 2020, when schools, hate using the word closed, but when the door is shut because we weren't really closed, there was a lot of work going on by our teachers and all, all in education and our students as well being remote. This was the opportunity where the ed specs were being developed. The Board of Education had initially approved them in January of 2020. But then in March of 2020, I was working with Dr. Brummett and the staff to really draft up these ed specs, providing them to the Anna Reynolds Building Committee to be reviewing, revising, adjusting, making decisions on, and then approving them. One question that always came up by past members of the building committee that were on it was ensuring that staff had a say and staff had involvement. And that is something that as these plans were being developed, each area was getting a copy of them to give me feedback on that I could bring back to the building committee to Colliers at the time with their developing them. So, you know, staff had a significant say in those, in those ed specs in really ensuring. I wasn't the one making decisions when it came to an early childhood room. I wanted them looking at the specs and ensuring that all aspects were included in there. And then those ed specs were approved by the Board of Education in June of 2020 as one of those initial necessary steps to get the project moving. And those ed specs are what the organizations use to now draft up our plan. They're not creating, Castle Booze is not creating their own Anna Reynolds. They're using those ed specs to create, to create the Anna Reynolds renovation project. So going into after the ed specs and going into the summer of 2020 and the fall, knowing that this was going to referendum and going before the Town Council, ensuring it continued to move forward, we developed a video to really share what some of the concerns were of Anna Reynolds. And, you know, we weren't able to bring the public in because of COVID to see the school and see the concerns. And so we developed a video. And I'll make sure that you have a copy of this presentation. So you, if you have not seen the video, you can see number of the links that are in here. But it gave people a virtual tour of the, of the building, of the sense of why we were looking to spend the money and renovate Anna Reynolds. Also, I know that our Anna Reynolds PTL formed a special subcommittee called the Renovate Reynolds Committee. And Mrs. Parrotting, who's a Board of Ed member now, was a chair of that committee along with Carol Duggan, who's a former Anna Reynolds teacher. I hate to say former because she's there almost every day as a substitute now. And a current building committee member, Carol Duggan, really worked to make sure this project moved forward. And so when it went to referendum, it passed referendum. But overwhelmingly, at 73% of the Newington residents voted in favor of the project. And I've got on here the vote yes signs that were, you probably saw all over town during the election time back in 2020. So some of the things that you may not necessarily know is that, so once Castle Booze was brought on, while they had the ed specs and they can talk to myself and Dr. Brummett to learn about Anna Reynolds, they did a number of activities, what they called vision planning. And so the educational vision planning consisted of the two meetings that they held in the evening with a number of different representatives of Anna, Anna Reynolds to get a broad sense of what Anna Reynolds is as a community, as a school. They can read about it on paper. They can see our long-term goals and our improvement plan. But they really wanted to have the opportunity to speak with a number of stakeholders that are involved in Anna Reynolds to get that sense of, you know, what is Anna Reynolds and who is Anna, you know, as a school. And so we had a number of staff that participated in that committee, current and former students. And I cannot, as principal, I was so proud during those vision planning meetings to see our fourth graders share and talk about our school. When we were identifying people, they had shared with me, well, you know, they might be a little young, so you may not want to have students. You might want former students. And I was confident. So no, our my fourth graders, their student council, we're picking them, they're going to be involved. And they were, you know, excited, articulate, they were able to express what Anna Reynolds really means to them to help the architects develop that sense of our school and our community. I will say the last, after the second meeting, one of the kids that this last question he asked was, so what, when's our next meeting? And we were like, sorry, we just, we just had two, but he was all ready for the for the next meeting. This also included committee members, Board of Ed members, uh, PTO members. So it really created a sense of our school. And so what I have on the screen here is the Wordle that was created. So one question they asked, each person that was there was, you know, when you think about Anna Reynolds, what, what does Anna Reynolds mean? What do you, what do you have a sense of? And so you can see those words that really stand out with the words that really were being said repeatedly, that the sense of family, that sense of community, supportive, enduring, nurturing, dedicated, caring, and then those traditions. And so this gave Castle Booze a really sense of strong understanding of Anna Reynolds. I also have on the screen a programming design diagram that was created. As they spoke to our staff and held meetings with staff as well to get a sense, so where are the needs? And one thing that you can see here is this kind of talks about this loop right here is looking at the grade levels and how students would be progressing around the building. And then the concept of trying to pull some of the different specials or different areas to more the front of the building for public access. So as they were developing their plans, these were things that they were keeping in mind for those, for those, um, those proposals and those plans. Not all of that can necessarily happen. For example, we wouldn't be able to move the gym to a whole new location. So some things have to stay where they were, but they looked at different options as they were developing these plans to then bring to the Anna Reynolds Building Committee. So now I'm going to show you a couple of slides on the new, the Anna Reynolds. And these are the next steps that were approved by the Anna Reynolds Building Committee. So the, the first one here is the site concepts. And so the Anna Reynolds Building Committee had a couple of different site committee, uh, site concepts that they looked at that were proposed to them and they ultimately went with concept B. But I wanted to outline, so what does that look like? So on the left-hand side of the screen, you have the current traffic patterns at Anna Reynolds. All the cars and buses come in off of Reservoir Road. Cars head up into the school for the drop off. The buses move forward and split. Then you have right here where they're regathering and rejoining. They're both together in this area. And then the buses split off and are parked down here. And then you have the cars going down and then rejoining. So you have a whole bunch of different spots where cars and buses are really intersecting in the current layout of Anna Reynolds. This was a concern. I know when I came to Anna Reynolds, I remember a parent saying to me, you, the first thing you need to do is fix the traffic issues and I, that's not going to be something I might be able to. But a lot of our teachers expressed those concerns and I know our families have expressed those concerns. And so the site concept that was approved has now two entrances and exits essentially. And so we would be having, coming off of Reservoir, a car loop right here so that cars can enter and exit on Reservoir. And then now in the lower, coming off of Fenn, there is a bus loop that's going to be able to allow buses to come in and out. And it's not solely, there will be signage to ensure people know that if you're coming, you need to be entering on Reservoir Road. So there'll be two ways of coming in to, there's an area right here that is then blocked off that can be open, kind of like a gate, so that there is that flow between when necessary. But it would really be closed off like during the day to prevent that traffic flow. Another major improvement is that there's this crosswalk kind of area right here. So for students that are walking up currently down from the Fenn Road and come up the, the trail right here, we have a staff member that comes to make sure that they can cross safely in this area. But we would be reducing that hazard in the renovated plans. So you can see the new change. This will also help with pickup, which we've had a number of increases in pickup because of COVID. And our traffic backup goes all the way down Reservoir. So we've been able, we're able to lengthen this area to be able to increase the number of cars and vans doing pickup. So that's the going to be the new layout of the, the parking lot and traffic, traffic patterns. The next one is the proposed courtyard that's been been put forward. And this is the plans that have been currently approved by the Anna Reynolds Building Committee. And so the, this project is looking at right now, the proposed plan has turf in here. And then you've got the playground area, a trap going around as well, a water table that would then have the irrigation brought out to it. So and you've got some outdoor classroom space on either side and then there's some seating out here as well. So this is currently the plan that's in the plan, in the budget and in the proposal. There are some alt um, deducted when it goes out to bid. So if the bids come back and they're over budget, there are some deduct uh, options that the um, the bidders have to put forward. One of those is the concept of turf in the courtyard. That is about, I believe, a three hundred thousand dollar cost, the cost of turf. So that is kind of reliant on the budget and where everything comes in at. But so this may change, uh, but it's currently the proposed one by KVA that would be going out to bid and approved by the Anna Reynolds Building Committee. And our courtyard is primarily used by our pre-K. And so this would be the playground area for our pre-K. If you've seen our courtyard, they know that you know, they have a lot more of the plat- they don't have a dedicated playground right now. They have a um, plastic, different plastic toys more so that are able to get out there. So they would now have this, the dedicated playground area. In terms of the site layout for our building, this again is the, the floor plan that's been approved by the Anna Reynolds Building Committee that was put forward to them and, and gone and approved and that we're building off of right now. So as you're coming in, currently this wing up here is our kindergarten area. And our kindergarten would be relocated and this would become the area for our preschool classes as well as some special Ed, potential self-contained program, uh, special Ed resource or OTPT space. And it allows for some expansion of pre-K in the future as well. Nursing, the main office is already might remaining in that same area. The nurses suite though would be getting, you know, a complete renovation uh, in, in changeover. Then as you're moving around the building, you're now going up basically each grade. If you saw back to that, you know, one of the goals of the project was to have that as you're kind of going through the years at Anna Reynolds. And so we have our four kindergarten classrooms here. Then you move into this common area, student commons for being able to have breakout space and students working, a learning center and interventionist, and then you're moving into our first grade section of the building. As you move around the wing, these would now be our second grade classrooms across from the media center. Our media center, technology classroom are still in the same locations, getting their rent of, getting their renovation. Moving down, the art room moves into the current music classroom. So the art room would be relocated to the music classroom. And then we have a learning center and we move into our third grade classrooms. Teacher planning, math interventionist, different support staff. This area right here is actually in, in order to ensure we have enough related services, it's going to get broken up into more of a resource room, special Ed kind of room and another interventionist space. So we know our staffing has changed, so that's updated. And then we move into our fourth grade area. Other related service staff or have the offices down here, our gym, and we circle back up. And then now our music room is being pulled to the front of the building. And then there's also going to be a platform area. The stage is developed into more of a music classroom for, for lessons. And then that allows easy access to the stage for the music program. Particularly important as we get ready for our performances and different shows and rehearsals. So bringing that to the front of the building as well. So this is kind of bringing you through to the new layout of love the building. They also wanted to make sure that as we plan, that we do know that there are years that we have bubble classrooms where we have had, uh, you know, up to tw- during my time there, we've gone anywhere from, we currently have nineteen classes K through four, twenty-one if you include our pre-K rooms, uh, but we've had up to twenty-two K through four classes. And so we want to make sure that we have that space if we do have a grade level that has five classes. And so this learning center over here, as well as this learning center are spaces that if we did need to, we can address the increased enrollment. And then our elevator is getting installed in this area over here by the stairwell. This brings us into, this was the work kind of over the summer that was approved by the Anna Reynolds Building Committee. Brings us into this school year. And so on the first day of school this year, Dr. Brummett got a call getting ready for the first day of school that the governor is coming to see your school and to talk about the Anna Reynolds Building Project. So it was really exciting opening of school this year to have him coming. And so he came, he visited classrooms, he learned about the project. He also got to speak to students. It was great seeing uh, him coming through the building and then holding his press conference, endorsing the Anna Reynolds Building Project as well as talking about students being in school. And then many of you could see in the background where I was speaking at the podium, many of the dignitaries in Newington attended as well, include, including the mayor, town council members and a state rep- state representatives and board and board members. So that brings us into the work that we've been doing this year. And so this year, as Castle Booze has been developing their uh, room layouts, they brought those forward and I've had staff, I've held meetings with different staff members so that they can review them and provide feedback on them. I'm not the one making a decision as to where the Cubbies are going to go into in a kindergarten classroom. The Castle Booze is meeting with our kindergarten teachers, first grade teachers, different classroom teachers to really get a sense of as we are developing your classroom, what does that layout need to look like? And then what I put on the screen, as well as they met with the art teacher and all the different related services staff, specials area teachers, to really go through those layouts, come back, revise them. For example, the nurses office up here was one of those areas that, given that space, we held multiple meetings, looking at redesigning, revising the plans, coming back together with, with Mercy and our school nurse to kind of make sure that we are designing a space that meets are the needs of our students as well as the, the staff working in that space. See the music room here and what that layout in that space looks like. And then the media center, which this is the current draft of the plan, but we still have meetings next week with our, um, with the, with the media center teacher to look at some additional changes that we might need to make to ensure that where her circulation desk is allows her have the visibility into classroom, the visibility down the stack. So while this is the current kind of draft that I'm sharing up here, it's still in the process of being, you know, designed in order to really meet the best needs of the staff and, and the, um, and the students. And so that one, I know we'll have another meeting on next week so that we can really make sure that it is, you know, going to meet the teacher's need and the student's needs. We've had meetings on, on security, meetings on the technology for the building, a number of meetings. So what does that look like and ensuring that the needs are, are met and that we're prepared? One meeting that we had was on doors and locks. And I, it was shocked to me to see that spending two hours going around the building, but talking about every single door and making sure the type of door is, then what does security look like for people coming in and out of that door? And really, uh, you know, every single component that goes into such details with designing every aspect of, of the plan in the project. And so the big piece that I've been really undertaking over the past couple of weeks is that phasing plan. There is a phasing plan for the project that's been, in a sense, finalized. I'm hoping right now, it looks like on February fourteenth, they'll have a meeting with staff to share that with staff and with families to walk them through the phasing plan of what wings of the building will be done and what stages. A big piece on that was as we develop, being able to make sure that we had staff, space for all the staff and the classes that needed to be relocated during each phase of the plan. And so in order to do that, um, and allow the construction manager to take larger chunks of the building at one time to ensure the project moves as quickly as possible, there is only going to be um, relocation involving pre-K. And so our two pre-K classes during the renovation project will be relocated to other schools. That, that plan is still in the process where, you know, meeting on what that will look like and where they would go. But they would be relocated, but the phasing plan does allow for the all K four students and our staffing to remain, remain in the building and allow space for them. So we've developed those plans and we'll be sharing that la- later that this month with staff. So I hope this gave you a good idea of all the work that's gone into the project uh, up to date right now and where we are going with next steps before construction begins in June. So if you have questions uh, from myself or for, I, you know, Mr. Woods is on and I believe Marnie and Jen are still on with us as well.
Okay, uh, Ms. Piradi.
Thank you, Dr. Fletcher. Uh, Mr. Smith and team, I just um, want to say thank you. Mr. Smith, this is an amazing presentation. I think it definitely helped show the board and the public exactly what's been going on, how long it's been going on. Um, there's, you know, even you, you indicated there's more work behind the scenes, just attention to detail that constantly you and, and, and the rest of the team is uh, and staff is, you know, talking about every single day. So I think this was a great presentation. Thank you for all the work and super excited for this renovation to happen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Piradi. I don't see any other hands or questions at this time. Dr. Brummett?
Well, I just want to thank um, Mr. Smith. I, I tease him all the time when you're in a renovation project. It's like a second full-time job. Um, it's a lot of work. It's a ton of work. We do have a good team behind us, a great team behind us with uh, Castle Booze and Marnie. And Mr. Woods has been a phenomenal building chair. So um, just want to put it out there that this is a lot of work. I appreciate the support the town has given the project as we move it forward, toward the breaking up ground this summer. So I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Fletcher. It looks like there are some other hands up.
Yeah, uh, Mr. Woods?
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just want to, first of all, thank you for asking us tonight to attend. Tom, it's, it's really good to be in this position to let you know where we are. It's taken, believe it or not, over two years to get us here. So it is a tremendous work. The building committee, if you don't know, is made up of seven members. Three members from the public at large, two from the town council, two from the Board of Education. The elected officials serve whatever length of term they have. So they're on for minimum of two years. If they get reelected, they, they stay on. The members of the public, which is three of us, um, we stay on for the entire length of the project. And right now, currently, serving on the committee is Jeremy Wetzel as a member of the public, Carol Dugan, which I'm sure everybody knows Carol Dugan, um, longtime teacher there. And she's been a great asset uh, to helping us plan this building. Uh, Mike Camillo, town councillor, Kim Rata, newly elected town councillor, Amy Piradi, one of your own, um, is on, and Daniel Gerard, also one of your own newly elected, and myself. So we've been working really, really hard. Um, I am proud and very happy to tell you that we are on budget and relatively on schedule. I, you know, we might be lagging a few weeks behind here or there. And I think one of the things that Jason shared with you is that our construction process is taking a little bit longer than we initially anticipated. And some of that, um, some of it is due just to times that we're in, but mainly the amount of free space that you, the Board of Education and your administration um, has been able to free up to allow us to be able to construct the building. As you can imagine, it's very difficult to construct a building when you have students in it, but we, we will do it and we will do it very safely. But again, I am, I am very proud of the team that I've worked with. Dr. Brummett, Lou Jack-Mowit, um, and actually Marnie Lisca from Construction Services Group is on this call as well as the architect from Castle Booze, Jennifer Maggioli. They have done an outstanding job. Um, without them, we wouldn't be where we are right now. And it is crucial, we're kind of, believe it or not, even though we're not done until two thousand and twenty-four, we're in crunch time. Um, so I believe a little bit later in your agenda, we are here tonight actually to make sure that we get you to approve the construction documents that were sent to you uh, last week. That's critical for us to move to the next level. We need to go in front of the state Office of School Construction Grants. They need to approve where we are. And one of the requirements is that you approve the plans and specifications that were sent to you. We expect to go out to bid sometime- We expect to go out to bid sometime late February, early March. With the construction start, as Jason told you, in June of 2022. And with that, I know I am here for questions as well as Jennifer and Marnie are on and they. Jennifer, if you have any questions about the actual building itself in detail, she can answer those. She is the building architect. And anything to do with budget would go to Marnie. We're here for your questions. And again, thank you.
Dr. Fletcher, you're muted.
I'm sorry. Ms. Rose?
So I do have a question for Mr. Woods. Dr. Fletcher, may I address him?
Yes, you may.
Thank you. Mr. Woods, I know that I'm on the the Building Committee and I've been to all of the meetings. So I understand, you know, where we're at and that we're on budget and all the add-ins and all that stuff. My question is, is what exactly, and I read it over and I I guess I just don't quite understand, what are we voting on tonight? Like what are, again, I know, like it says 90% of the drawings approval. So what exactly are we approving? Can you be like, put in layman's terms, please?
Yeah. So yeah, what you're doing is the plans and specifications that we sent you, which are the current completed construction documents. You're approving those tonight so we can tell the state that yes, we've presented this plan to the Board of Education. And they are in agreement with where we are. And again, this has been a collaboration. While the Building Committee is in charge, Dr. Brummett, Lou Jackmowitz, as well as Jason have been an integral part, as well as the whole Anna Reynolds staff. This is a really big collaborative. You are included and will be included every step of the way. The board itself, I don't want to say is excluded, but you're really not part of the process.
That's where I guess I was confused because I'm on the committee and I hear what we have, all the stuff we approve there. So then I'm like, and I'm not, by no means am I going to say, you know, do I, you know, do I plan on saying no to this? But it's just a matter of like, I didn't quite understand because I know being on the Building Committee, we kind of. The Building Committee approves a whole bunch of stuff. And so I was just confused as to what the board's role was. Thank you.
Good example. I I've been around for a long time now and I, one of the first things that as an elected official, I got appointed. To a committee that was in charge of putting roofs on the building. I literally was on for two meetings. One, making a presentation to the town council for them to approve all the work that had been done. I didn't do anything, right? So it's kind of when you come in. So again, I am available, myself, 860-655-4906. You can call me, email me anytime, any questions you have at all, I will gladly answer for you. And I see Marnie has her hand up, who are.
Go ahead, Marnie.
Orders representative.
Thank you. I just wanted to also clarify that the approval needed from the Board of Education is actually state requirement. It's a, by the Office of School Construction Grants and Review. So they have, they have a set process that we need to follow. And we have three separate meetings that we have with the state to review the drawings that Castle Booze has developed. So we've already had the first two meetings with the state. So they've reviewed the design development drawings. They've, excuse me, they've reviewed the schematic design drawings. They've reviewed the design development drawings. And now it's time for them to review the construction documents. So the construction documents that you'd be voting on tonight incorrectly had a title of 90%. They're actually the full drawings, 100%. And again, the state requires approvals from both the Building Committee and the Board of Education. Before we can have the last meeting with the state, which is called a PCR meeting. Which I believe stands for Plan Completion Review. So really what you're allowing the project team to do by voting and approving those documents tonight. Is for us to go have that meeting with the state, which is scheduled for February 9th, I believe. And then the state does their full review of the documents to make sure that they're in compliance with the ed specs that were developed. All EDA codes, things like that. And once of us are on those drawings, we can bid. So this is just this approval, next step in the process, and it's required for every single town.
Thank you very much. Okay, Ms. Weaver.
Oh, yeah, just quickly, I wanted to say thank you also just for clarifying everything. I guess I don't want to say this is like a formality then or a check the box type of deal, but. Feel like it kind of is, but I appreciate that explanation as well. And I guess my my second question, given Ms. Lisca's comments are, should we change the motion in the next item after that? Given, given that change and numbered.
Yeah, we were made aware of this yesterday and we have already planned on making that change.
Perfect. Just want to say thank you again for. Yes, yes, I just want to say, say thank you to everyone for their time and efforts. I know this is no small undertaking. And I just want to say thank you to each and every person who's been involved in this project. I know how important this is to our teachers, to our students. So again, gratitude is abounds.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I don't see any more questions. So at this time, we are going to move on to our next agenda item. Which is our new business F1, that is our action for Anna Reynolds Construction Drawings and Cost Estimate. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to ask Dr. Brummett to give an explanation of it and the reason for the changes in the numbers in there. Then I'm going to entertain a motion and then at that time we can discuss it as a board. Okay, so.
Thank you, Dr. Fletcher, and I would invite Mr. Woods to join in if I need any clarification. But we were reviewing the motions yesterday and it was brought to our attention that we are really approving the full. Construction drawings and cost estimates. And that is what the document that the board received in their packet, which is these items. And they are reflective of all the specs and all the costs that have gone through. And they are in line with the budget that was allotted for this project. And this will allow us to complete this form, which will be something that we need to provide to the Office of School Grants and Construction. If the board approves it this evening, then there'll be a variety of signatures that we need to obtain, my my own signature as well as. Chair and I believe the Building Committee Chair. So all of that will be processed so that we can move forward with our grant application as approved by Ms. Lisca. Would you like to add anything to that, Mr. Woods?
Thank you, Dr. Brummett. The only thing I'd like to add, I know that was touched upon briefly, that there are some, there are deduct alternates and. Actually randomly referred referred to as value engineering. They're in there for a specific reason. In case the project does come in over budget, you have to have some way to cut things back. And I'm going to give you a really good example. Right now, we had scoped several of the pipes. Drainage and sewer pipes that are in the school and we could do that in two of the wings. And one of the wings, we could not do that because we can't find the access points. And believe it or not, they will find the access points once construction starts and that savings is about $123,000. But when they did, the cameras and the viewing of the pipes that are in the wing that we could look at, we can reuse the pipes. So more than likely, the pipes in the other wing will be the same. So again, it's just to allow the project to keep moving forward. The project is being bid as you see it with the plans. Those deduct alternates might be taken, they might not be taken. It is entirely up to the Building Committee after the bids come in. Other than that, I mean, Jason, I think you did an incredible job presenting this and you, again, you went right back pretty much to the beginning. Right to when we started meeting with Colliers and the Building Committee was formed. The Building Committee, as well as all the representatives from the town, specifically town council. And members of the Board of Education that worked on this project early, worked really hard to get us renovation status. We had renovation status commitment from the state of Connecticut prior to going out for the referendum. That's huge. That's big. That's that's another 10% coming from the state that you don't get upfront. We have that. So this is, again, just the culmination of a lot of work by a lot of people. And we're going to deliver you a first-class school in another two years. And I'm going to be very happy to be proud of that, this this project. That's all I have, Dr. Brummett.
Thank you very much, Mr. Woods. I think you summed it up beautifully and I'll turn it over to Dr. Fletcher if they want, the board wants to take up the motion.
Okay, so would somebody like to read the motion?
I'll read it.
Go ahead.
Move the Newington Board of Education to approve the construction drawings, plans and cost estimate for the Anna Reynolds Building Project as required by the state grant process.
Okay, I have a motion. It's been motions made and seconded. I will now open it for discussion related to the construction drawing plans and cost estimate. Any board members have questions or comments that you'd like to make at this time? Ms. Parati?
I'll just say that obviously I'm going to vote yes on this item. And the the documents provided are super detailed and amazingly done. Obviously, I haven't gone through every single page and number and learning everything, you know, beyond the committee and everything. It's very, it's a lot to take in, but I know that the, I trust that the committee has done everything they needed to do. The architects, Marnie, everybody has come up with a great plan, the construction company, Tom's not on. But I just think it's a great plan. I'm excited for the project and I'm going to vote yes.
Thank you, Ms. Parati. Any other board members? Seeing there are no other questions or comments to be made, I'm going to call the question and I'm going to ask the clerk to call the roll.
Michael Veranda.
Yes.
Danielle Droz.
Yes.
Dr. Bruce Fletcher.
Yes.
Beth Nanki-Hut Wagner.
Yes.
Richard Loverrier.
Yes.
Amy Parati.
Yes.
Sam Sharma.
Yes.
Jessica Weaver.
Yes.
Anastasia Yap.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously, nine to zero.
Thank you all very much. Thank you to our committee members that were here and for all the information that has been shared. That's very impressive and I'm looking forward to a good construction project. Okay, we're going to be moving on now to our new business item number two, which is the discussion of our school calendar.
Thank you very much, Dr. Fletcher. The board had charged me with some follow-up items related to our discussion. A few weeks back about the calendar changes and the potential addition of holidays. The board also asked me to develop a survey, which I did with the help of Steve Ferrisi and others. One of the things I wanted to share with the board, my first section here is a potential survey. It's just for your review, I think these capture the questions that are salient to the issues that we discussed last meeting. But here are, just for the sake of board understanding, these are all the holidays that we currently recognize on our school calendar. And I'm sure most of those won't surprise you. Here are some of the questions that I believe encapsulate what the board wanted to discuss. And this is, should we move the first day of school to a later date? Currently, it is August 25th. Would we want to move it to August 31st? That's one question. Should we add the Hindu holiday, Diwali, which would make next October 24th a school holiday? We also discussed at the last meeting, Three Kings Day. If we were to, if the board were to agree to that, that would make January 6th a school holiday. There also was something that, this is a carryover item from last year that I remembered as we were talking about calendars. There was some discussion last year about the Columbus Holiday, should that be renamed to Indigenous Peoples' Day? I did do some research for the board, which I'll get to in a minute on which districts, what the names are for that in different districts. Oh, we've also heard, we've heard presentations on the Muslim holiday, Eid Al-Fitr. And while this school year, the holiday falls on a Saturday, I'm sorry, next school year. The following school year, the subsequent school year, it would fall on April 10th, which is a regular school day. So that would be another potential school holiday. And then I believe the board had wanted to entertain the question of if we add some holidays, should we take some away? So I came up with some of the holidays that may be potentially eliminated. Rosh Hashanah, which is currently September 26th, Yom Kippur, October 5th, Good Friday, April 7th. And this would only be a question that would pertain to our certified staff is if feasible. Should we look at putting some of our professional development days on school holidays that. Such as Three Kings or one of those other holidays that would allow some of our days not to be extended into June. So that would be an approach. We did get, I believe a board member, it might have been Ms. Rose, I can't recall, had said, well, I believe there was a survey done earlier about. Who prefers an earlier start date versus a later start date? With the help of Mr. Ferrisi, we put our fingers on that survey, which was done before I actually came to the district. It was administered in the 2018, 19 school year, I believe, or the 20, yeah, that would have been it. And they were, teachers were asked two options. Should we start school on March, I'm sorry, August 24th for teachers, August 26th for students? And this other question they were asked, or would people prefer the later start? And this again is already happened. This is an old survey, but we kind of, for point of discussion, thought this would be good information. And you can see the results that just about three quarters of our staff prefer the earlier start date of August 24th. In a previous survey, not to say that that couldn't change, but when given these two options several years ago. The vast majority do prefer the earlier start date. It was a bit more of a split when we looked at the later start date. So that is what informed the decision for the school year. To go with that earlier start date at the time. And just to recap, we've done a little more research for the board, looking at all of our neighboring communities. You can see that there are some districts that do start pretty early, like Berlin. And others start toward the end of August, you know, and there's a wide range here, some start first, first day of September. And logically, the later you start, the later you get out, the earlier you start, the earlier you get out, unless you have a lot of snow days. So this, I have to do a little turn. Why not? Shoot, I have to download in order for this to work. Some of these forms did not lend themselves to scanning in the right direction. So I will quickly get to the form that we need. There we go. Okay, now I can do a little sleight of hand here. Okay, I keep turning it the wrong way. I hope I'm not making anybody dizzy. There we go. So again, a review of which school districts observe which holidays. It appears that no school districts in our area observe the Eid Al-Fitr holiday. Diwali is observed in South Windsor, but nowhere else. Diwali is observed in South Windsor, but nowhere else. Rosh Hashanah is kind of a split. Rosh Hashanah and Yom Kippur tend to go hand in hand. If a district observes one, they seem to observe the other and vice versa. So you can see that's kind of a 50-50 split among districts in our area. In Newington, we, we celebrate currently, both of those are school holidays. Good Friday is, it appears to be universally celebrated by every district or put as a school holiday. And this just goes further out. Let's see if I can move it across. I did, as a result of the last meeting, ask about Three Kings. And it looks like we have in our area, two school districts that celebrate Three Kings. And that is Waterbury and East Hartford. And I'm going to have to do another flip here. This is just a quick analysis of Columbus Day and how that's referred to. You can see some districts, this is kind of the year where a lot of districts made the change. Berlin now calls it a fall break. Many districts still call it Columbus Day, but South Windsor and West Hartford refer to it as Indigenous Peoples' Day. So those, I believe, cover the questions that the board had. Let me see what other. And I, the board also asked us to look at the demographics. And in our district, this is the breakdown of what data we keep. We do not keep data on folks who identify as Muslim or Hindu, but we do break it down by these groups. And these are all state groupings that, that are assigned. But it is noteworthy that nearly 25% of our population is Hispanic. And that isn't strictly children from Hartford. That's obviously students who reside in Newington. So that is our breakdown of demographics by their ethnicity. And this is the impact on a school calendar, should we start to observe these holidays? So calendar number one is if we start later. So in this instance, the first day of school for teachers is the 26th and the first day for kids is the 31st. And this calendar does add all the holidays that the board is considering. When you do all of that, your last day, if there are no snow days, would be June 15th. And the second calendar is if we continue to start school similar to this year on August 25th. This does also add the calendars, the, sorry, the holidays. So if you start on August 25th, even with adding those additional holidays, your last day of school, if there are no snow days, is June 9th. So these are all just informational items. There's, there's no action by the board tonight. I believe I have been directed to administer that survey. The right place here. So I will turn it back over to Dr. Fletcher for any questions.
Okay, Danielle Droes.
All right, so thank you, Dr. Roman, for putting a survey together. I do want to clarify. I, I, I think we're going down a pretty scary road to say, like, that we're going to do, add this holiday and take this holiday, holiday away. So the only, I, I did look at the calendar ahead of time. The only holiday on there that I, I could see us taking away without it causing a, you know, culturally diverse issue is the December 23rd. I did a lot of, you know, I know, I take, I, I have some personal, like, skin in this game. West Hartford doesn't have the 23rd off, Hartford doesn't have the 23rd off. So that one's another one where like some districts have it and some don't. Where it's not a religious holiday, it's, you know, technically the holiday is the 24th, not the 23rd. I know that depending on where, you know, that lands. And my only concern with that survey is I think it needs to be, do we want to add Diwali and Three Kings, like, right? I, I really feel like it's an all or nothing. It's either we're going to add these three because we want to be culturally, culturally and religiously responsible, right? Or we aren't adding and we're just kind of keeping things status quo. I am very apprehensive about saying it's like, we can add this one, or this one, or this one. If we have students in our district that celebrate Three Kings Day and celebrate Yom Kippur, they're going to celebrate Rosh Hashanah. You are correct, you're not going to get one or the other. You know, we, we can't say this holiday is more important than that holiday. So I think in the way that that survey is written, it needs to be clear that it's, at least my opinion is it's, we're adding all three or we're adding none and we're, we're going to keep it status quo how it is. So that's my two cents.
If I could just respond to the 23rd of December and Lou or Steve, correct me if I'm wrong, that is a mandatory holiday day we had to add due to some of our contracts. Steve, could you clarify that for me? If you're still on, I believe.
I am, thank you. So yes, that was a day that was put in based on our AFSMI contract. That would be the secretarial custodial transportation and food services contract. I'm not certain if that will continue each and every year. I have to revisit the contract and take a look at that. So, but I, I do know that that was put on for that purpose.
And I do understand as well, if we were to, I believe the reason they had to add that in is because whenever the contract came up for renewal and we, the district decided to make Veterans Day a regular school day, then those contracts that had a certain number of holidays would not give up a holiday, it just had to be transferred to another day. Similarly, if we were to not have Columbus Day, because so many contracts have Columbus Day in it, we would have to find another day to make sure contracts. And we'd have to wait till the contracts were up for renewal before we made that change. I'm assuming that's how it happened, I was not here. Steve, does that resonate with you?
That is absolutely correct.
Okay, I'll turn it back to you, Dr. Fletcher.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Branda.
Thank you. I agree with Danielle in terms of just making it the three or nothing. And I know Danielle, that's scaring you, so it's okay, we can be scared together. One thing, and Dr. Roman, you just kind of alluded to it, that I'm wondering is, I guess I, with Columbus Day, I, I just have always felt kind of, I've never felt a connection to it in any way as to like why we shouldn't be in school or why we should be. And I know that there have been a lot of talks about Veterans Day. And I, I say that with, I, I want to be clear that the schools do a really great job on Veterans Day. I think we do a lot of great things, but I, I do wonder if we're going this route to survey teachers, I wonder what their view would be of a trade-off of Columbus Day versus Veterans Day? Because I, I feel like we're, yes, I feel like a lot of people unfortunately spend the day on Veterans Day at home and don't really appreciate what the day is for, but there are a lot of people that do. And, and I don't want to take that for granted. And I do know we have a lot of educators who are veterans too. So it's just something that as you were going through the questions and talking about Columbus Day, instead of renaming it, I just, I just wonder if it's, that's the school day that we pick instead of Veterans Day and give Veterans Day back. I'm not sure what the survey results would say, but I would love to see that asked somehow, either through the survey or through the, the union itself, and then agree with Danielle, just to say, make it the three holidays and then we'll figure out the calendar on, on the end, if that's what you want. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Branda. Ms. Hut Wagner?
Um, thank you. I also agree with the previous two board members that spoke regarding all three or nothing. I think we have to be very careful there. And then question about Columbus Day, I just want to make sure I didn't miss it in my packet, but do we have any data? Are there, I'm sure there's districts that don't necessarily have Columbus Day as a day off for students. So I'm just wondering if that's some day we could buy back perhaps? And then just a quick question about, what is the policy for how many snow days can be added before it's like too much and you need to go pull it from a break? Or, you know, some other configuration? And just to preface all that, I should have said this first, thank you for the collection of this data. I think this is extremely helpful, as I was kind of poring through it the other night, to, to help us make an informed decision. So thank you for gathering this.
I believe, I'll, I'll double check. I think districts are still celebrating Columbus Day, but I'm going to double check that we didn't miss any that actually have made it a regular school day. And I believe you had another question that just flew out of my head.
It was, how many snow days before? And I'm guessing it's like the asterisk, perhaps marked days in June, but I just wanted to be clear for that.
By state statute, we can't go beyond the last day of June. So if we were to have the, the snowiest school year ever and we added on that many days, we could only go as far as then. Now, in a situation like that, I would probably bring it to the board because we could at any time choose to shave off some days from April vacation. Not the most popular thing to do, but if you're getting late in the school year, that is a possibility. But you're, we are not allowed to extend the school year into July. So that is the hard and fast rule. But I've never actually had in my time as a superintendent, that many snow days that that was ever contemplated, but never say never.
Okay, Ms. Weaver.
Yeah, I just want to thank Ms. Droes for bringing that up. I think that's a really great point and something I wasn't even thinking of, you know, initially, I was like, oh, this is great. But I'm just, just grateful for that input and that feedback. And also to Mr. Branda's comments too, I had a staff member, my former teacher, ask me, you know, you guys are talking about holidays or something, like, what about Veterans Day? I'm a veteran and I feel like we used to have it off and the school district doesn't like value me anymore. And I was like, I'm sorry you feel that way. You know, I feel like, I've, I've been a student and we've done presentations leading up Veterans Day for Mr. S. And he's been great. And that's really, am I frozen?
A little bit.
Frozen, yep. I was like, I'm talking and I'm frozen. Am I back?
Yes.
You're back.
Okay, apologies. I don't know where I left off, but I, sorry about Veterans Day or something. But just wanted to, Mr. Branda's laughing at me, I'm so sorry. I will call Frontier tomorrow. So I think my point was like, the staff that worked up to me talking about Veterans Day, you know, I was talking about my experience as a student on Veterans Day, Mr. S. does incredible presentations, leading up to it when we did have it off. And I, I appreciated his perspective and I think any student who's come through this system, who has sat through a presentation by Mr. S., it's really great. I, you know, it's not him to, to, to carry that weight, but I think that's just something to consider. I will say, like, Columbus Day is a state holiday. I have personal, like, views on that from third grade that I'm going to do. But I just think this debate, like, in the years is funny, I've been like talking about this, I wrote about this in my college yesterday because I was like third grade questioning why we have this holiday. But I think it's, it's a very common holiday and people, I mean, I think Berlin calling it a fall break, I don't want it to be a whole, you know, culturally thing again. I think it, it does deserve revisiting, in my personal view. Again, I don't want this to be a hullabaloo of, of things again, but I think it does, does deserve, I think, Mr. Branda's point, like, like, when we talk about our holidays, it's important maybe to, to think why we celebrate them and what they are. And perhaps the day off is supposed to reflect that. So I think with that, you know, that's something to consider as well. I did not know about the contract thing, so I think that's something also, that would be great to learn more about of, of who affects what. That's a very valid and binding issue. And then I think lastly, I just want to bring up again, I'll be the one just saying like, childcare thing. Again, I go back and forth on this because I think it's great that we, we recognize and are equitable in terms of how we're, we're. But I think it's also important to know, you know, like, what are the childcare impacts, not only on our community, but perhaps we can ask our staff, because I know, you know, our, our teachers, our board member teachers can maybe speak to this a little more than I can. But I think there can be conflicts if we have it off and another district doesn't in, in terms of childcare. How is that impacting our staff? So I think perhaps if we could just add a question on the survey that like, does this impact childcare or anything like that? I don't think that, you know, has to be the, I'm not tiering any of the, you know, importance of, of what should go into it, but I just think it's a factor we should consider. Thank you.
Well, thank you. And I will say that as a veteran, I was disappointed when we lost our Veterans Day holiday, but I was impressed by the programs we had in our schools. So, you know, I'm very happy with that as well because there's more of an awareness than what the children had before. So sometimes you give a little, you get a lot more in return. Ms. Yap?
Hi, I was just going to say, I do agree with two things. Ms. Droes, I am for the all or nothing. I don't think we should choose some holidays and not the others. In regards to Mr. Branda, I 100% agree with you in regards to Veterans Day. I personally have a military family and I was in the ROTC, so I know how important Veterans Day was. We also have, you know, the VA in Newington. I know, you know, there are a lot of veterans in town and teachers, so that's something that's important to everyone. My preschooler made something for Veterans Day, so I thought that was really nice for the veterans. That's all I'd like to say. But thank you all for, you know, your comments. Thank you.
Thank you, and Mr. Sharma.
Hi. Well, I, I agree with what, what Danielle said about either we do, either we put all three or we keep it the way it is. Yeah, I mean, that's, I think that's, 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 and then maybe with Columbus Day and what, maybe like a survey or something that could give us some more insight. Thanks.
Thank you, and Ms. Droes.
All right, so I, I guess to respond to a couple of things, I, I used to, I asked for no paper, so I don't have paper copies and I used to have it on my desktop, so I can't go back to the calendar because the Chromebook doesn't have the capacity to do that. But I'm wondering if we could adjust April vacation. I know some years we can't, but to incorporate, to incorporate Good Friday, to give us back a day, to have Good Friday in the vacation. I know as a teacher, we don't always love that because we get gypped a day of vacation, but it would give us a day back where we would still be saying, yes, we're going to have Good Friday off, but it does sometimes fall in April vacation. So I wonder if that's a possibility. And as far as the daycare goes, I think that is more of a concern for our parents, not our teachers necessarily, because the teachers would have the day off. So, you know, I do think it would be interesting if we threw out some, and I don't, I know parent surveys don't always come back with great response, but it would be nice to kind of hear our, you know, our constituents, like what do, do the parents want and how do the parents feel? So that's, I don't know how, if, that could be done if it's feasible, but even in that, if it's, I know it's awkward, like, which holidays do you celebrate? Like, if we have no one in the whole district who's celebrating, you know, one of the holidays, then we don't have to include it necessarily this year and, and maybe reevaluate in a year or two. So that's my thoughts.
Thank you very much, and Ms. Hut Wagner.
Thank you, I just wanted to comment, just kind of give my perspective on the daycare thing. Though I'm not a Newington teacher, I am a, a teacher and I do have two young children, one of which goes to a preschool at a Newington school. And so, you know, the childcare thing, it, it is tricky and I imagine it's tricky for some parents and teachers as well, especially if you're in a district like Ms. Droes mentioned. My son had the 23rd off and I did not, so he came to school with me that day, which was a fun adventure. So, but my, my motivation for, around this topic really goes more to the start of the school year. When I just looked at kind of the, the other towns that you, that were in the report, I think it was like three, I wrote down three out of 13 maybe are starting that week, the week before the 29th, and everybody else is starting that following week. So just thinking if teachers have kids that live in other districts other than Newington. And obviously, this, this really comes down to what the teachers feel is best, but it almost seems like it makes sense that we kind of correlate with the. But it almost seems like it makes sense that we kind of correlate with the percentage.
And in fact, that actually is what drove some of this discussion as teachers had surfaced to me that they wanted us to consider that because of the disparity between where they work, where they live and with the school district. So that is part of the consideration here.
Okay, Mr. Farisi.
Thank you, Dr. Fletcher. I just wanted to clarify a couple of things, just so we all have the same information. I was browsing through some of the contracts quickly during the discussion. So the, on the calendars, you will see the day before Christmas Eve is a holiday. And that happens to fall on both, I believe, on a Friday. That is not a contractually required day off. So there is no contract requirement for that day. Christmas Eve would be, but not the day before, which would be the twenty third on both of the calendars that we have in front of us. So it, it is only when it falls on a weekend do we have to take that Friday off. But when it doesn't fall on a weekend, the rule is when it doesn't, when Christmas isn't on a weekend, then that Friday is not off. So that's the rule associated with that. In regards to Columbus Day, that is specifically written into the town's contract, the AFSMI contract. So that would be one that would, you know, impact a, a contract.
All right, very good. Thank you, Mr. Branda.
Mr. Farisi, so just so I'm clear, is Christmas Eve, if, when Christmas Eve falls on a weekend, that's not a day that we have to make up during the week at all?
Correct, when Christmas falls on the weekend.
It's only when Christmas, not when Christmas Eve.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Any more questions related to the calendar or any comments? Ms. Weaver.
So just want to clarify too. And again, I think everybody for their comments, it's helpful, I think, for all of us to learn from each other. But I guess in terms of now next steps, I'm just wondering in terms of, or we're asking, we're asking for a couple of surveys, I guess, out of this. And I know that's, that's an undertaking. But just wondering in terms of moving that forward, how that looks in terms of, do we need to actually decide on anything? Obviously, I know not tonight, but in terms of is there a deadline to then change the school calendar? I know some of them haven't even been released, but obviously we want to be able to have up to date information. And we usually do that. So I, I'm not saying, you know, the clock's ticking, but in terms of time of, of the essence, what is our timeline in terms of looking at making the actual actionable items, getting the feedback, and then being able to vote on change or no change? Thanks.
Okay, Dr. Berman.
Sure, and I'll, Steve is my survey expert. But because we can use these surveys electronically, I think it's not a super heavy lift once we fine tune the questions. You know, as someone mentioned, getting responses in, if we open it up to parents, you, we may or may not get a huge return. The board would have to vote on any changes of the calendar. And if we do change start dates for next year, that has an impact on professional development days as well as any plans people have made, though we're only contemplating pushing the start date out. It's already early so that, but it could also impact anyone who's made travel plans for June of 2023. Although that would be not the best thing to do right now with all the uncertainty. I don't know if Steve, if you wanted to add anything to the process or protocols.
No, I, I think you covered it. Yeah, we would just want to keep looking at the calendar, looking at what some of the rule sets are behind some of the contracts and making sure that we can manage any decisions that are made. But I think we can do that with a lot of what is being discussed currently. And then use some of the feedback to help inform that.
Excellent. Okay, so we look forward to getting that information in the future. And then we'll move ahead with this. Okay. Well, that concludes our second item, our discussion item on the school calendar. At this time, I think I'm safe to move into public participation on any matter related to board responsibilities. We will limit your time to three minutes. We just ask you to state your name and the street that you live on. So if there is anyone from the public. Ms. Havens.
Hi, Dana Havens, Dartford Avenue. The holidays, I have to echo what the other people were saying, like it's all or nothing. And you certainly can't take away other religious holidays to put in a different religious holiday. And also it was mentioned that you might put the survey out to parents, but you weren't sure how large of a response you'll get. You'll get a huge response because it really will affect our working, our, our work life, whether, especially with, if you have younger children, because then you need to either take the day off or do daycare. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else from the public wish to participate at this time? If not, I am going to move to H, remarks by board members. If anyone wants to add anything more, I know we've had a lot of discussion tonight. But are there any board members that would like to make a comment on the way out? Mr. Branda.
I'll be really quick and I, I kind of alluded to it when we honored Mr. Balling. But I went to two John Wallace concerts. So one was Chorus about two weeks ago, and then one was the band yesterday. And I just, again, want to just reiterate how impressed I am with our music department. Just not only how they've, you know, continued to educate our students and, and kind of fine tune a passion for music, but also just the way that they were able to coordinate the concerts under the circumstances, obviously having the live stream. So, you know, kudos to all the, the team that, that puts that forth so that family members near and far can watch. But just the coordination of getting parents and, and students in and out to not have too many in the auditoriums was just really impressive. It ran so smooth. Mr. Siv and Mr. Kelly did an awesome job and, and it's just a credit to the entire music department. So I just wanted to give a shout out on that.
Thank you very much. And Ms. Havens, if you wouldn't mind, just take your hand down, please. Thank you. Any other board members? Well, I would just like to make a couple of quick comments. I'm very impressed by the Anna Reynolds Building Committee, all of the great work that they have done. This has been a long time coming and they've been very professional and we're moving forward very well. And I will tell you, I went through something similar at Stoll High School in North Charleston, South Carolina, nineteen eighty six. So I know all of the issues that are going to be involved, moving students around while construction is going on. And it's, sometimes it feels like you're herding cats. But I'm sure that these guys are gonna get it together and, and it's gonna be great. And I'm looking forward to this thing getting started. Dr. Berman, any more comments?
I would just say that for the forums that we're gonna offer for the faculty and the families at Anna Reynolds, I will invite board members, it will be virtual. So I mean, some will be there anyway, maybe because it's their school. But others, if you're interested to see parent questions or parent reactions, you'll be included if that's amenable to your calendar. But thank you all very much.
Thank you. And all of you that have participated, I want to thank you all very much. And the board members, thank you for your time and your patience. It's been a great meeting. At this time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Seconded, all in favor, say aye.
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 Everyone have a wonderful night.
I know it's officially over. I just want to thank everyone for your support. So I didn't want to do that in the official board meeting, but thank you. I do appreciate it, so.
And our condolences to you.
Thank you. We love you. Bye.
Love you, bye.